Monday, or excuse me, Thursday, April 10th, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors to order. Supervisor Kits will be here in just a couple of minutes. Our first order of business, however, this evening is electronic particip- participation.
Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, this evening we have two public hearings on our agenda. Our first public hearing tonight is on the advertised tax rate. This is, the advertised tax rate was point seven six per $100 of assessed value. And we have a list of people that signed up either in advance or this evening. So I'm going to call those names in order. If we, if you didn't have the chance to sign up, and we got this.
Which as far as I know is in Montgomery County. In any case, there are several points I'd like to make to you. One is, there are very few dollars or cents you can invest that give you a better return than public education. As I calculated, the proposed tax increase would cost the average taxpayer in Montgomery County about seven to eight cents a day. In return for that, the return on investment over the lives of students will be 56 cents. There are very few businesses that offer that. That's number one. Number two, if you look at the turnover rate in Montgomery County, in Montgomery County schools, it's about 20%. One of the reasons for that in comparison to 10% nationwide is what we spend. The reality is many people are working two jobs. In fact, I just met a young woman the other day who was working a full-time job in addition to teaching because of the cost of housing in Montgomery County. The second area I'd like to point out is there's a real need under the school department budget to improve special needs services for all students. That covers the range of students, some students who are gifted, to students who are very severely handicapped. And we are legally obligated under federal and state law to offer the best possible services to students. The third area I'd like to point out is it is hard to be living in this day and age and not to see the spread of mental health needs around. The number of student suicides, of young adult suicides in southwest Virginia is huge compared to other areas in the state of Virginia. And also just because of the stresses of living, whether it's bullying or other kinds of events in students' lives. We have a dramatic need to improve the number of mental health services that are available to students at all levels. As I read this budget, and I've seen many of them upwards of $7 billion in other places, this budget's very clear, it's very specific. And obviously you can agree or disagree with what it stands for, but I don't think there's a greater, there is a need for more clarity. So I'd like to encourage you to support the proposed tax increase, and I hope that you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Beard. I understand we have a PowerPoint, so Jen's going to get you loaded up. And we will not start your time until it's on the screen.
Good evening, my name's Bob Beard. Thank you for letting me speak to you. I live here in Christiansburg. The word of the day is maladministration. Maladministration is the mismanagement of public resources or functions that might have serious implications for the agency or community. Maladministration can arise from negligence or incompetence. It does not have to be intentional. Maladministration can include things like misuse of public funds, mismanagement of projects. So tonight we're talking about big dollars, lots and lots of money. You know, so as we talk about all these different things, I ask everybody to do their research, ask questions. All right, whoops, I'm going speaking and. All right, so question is, property tax decreased 7% last year. And also there's talk for the, for Christiansburg to raise their water $8 more a month. So it all adds up, we're down in the silo, 1% isn't by itself, there's other things that come into play. And my question is, when is enough enough? The county revenue has grown 27% since 2022. The county revenue has grown 22, I mean 27% since 2022. So that, that's numbers never shared, okay? I got the numbers confirmed through Mark, okay? All right, so my next question is, who just gave themselves a 50% pay raise? And who voted yes and who voted no for that? Okay, so the next question is, why did the board, why did the board remove the resolution for vouchers and tax credits as a possible option for Montgomery County families and students? Mary Biggs is on a board called We the People for Education, and I think she needs to tell us all about that board. There is no freedom from government schools or taxes when we, you know, as we access the tyranny that we live under today. All right, so now, we always hear about county growth and the need for more and more and more and more. And my, my question I always ask is, when is enough enough? So you got your, you have your county growth right there. So 2020 to 2024, you've got enrollment declining, you've got a population decline, that's the census number. You know, so, you know, so it's going to be flat. Again, you know, remember, tax revenue is growing 27%, and yet our population hasn't, and neither has enrollment. We want to give more and more money to the schools. You know, school budgets have increased from 132, 132 million to 154. In the last two years, it's grown by $20 million in the last two years. MCPS is experiencing falling enrollment and with homeschoolers and lower test scores. Okay, so now the talk of the day is DEI, Equity 101. And we look at this page, and this is a sheet from their presentation they gave a couple of weeks ago, last month, regarding DI and about the name change. All they're doing is DI, just do a name change, keep the same mission statement, same budget, same departments, the whole nine yards. It's all in there, okay? Now, why is that important? Because President Trump's got an executive order to end DEI, okay? And it's not just simply implement a name change. That means there's $5 million on, on, on the board for MCPS. Virginia Tech dissolved DI, and that was not just a name change. So next is a recent expenditure, which you guys did, buy this building over here on Roanoke Street for three, you know, 3500. It just doesn't make sense, okay? You guys, you know, here's all the numbers on it. You got the tax revenue, you know, in 2024, the tax assessment is 490. And later that year, you paid $975,000 for it, $165,000 to draw up a renovation plans. Why wasn't that included in the purchase price so that we could have a title hall meeting or a meeting to discuss that expenditures? What's the procedure on that? It should have been open for discussion. And, you know, so there's a number of how to place it between those two. Anyways, we should be having a tax decrease, not a tax increase. You know, revenue's up 27%. You know, question of the day is, when is enough enough? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker this evening is Joanne Price. Following Ms. Price is Sherri Wyatt. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, board. I'm Joanne Price, I live in Blacksburg. Freedom is always stolen through taxation. The first act of George Washington was to bless this nation. This country's people use their God-given ingenuity to build a life and a living. But government grew and built over time a system of taxation to reduce hard-working citizens to paycheck-to-paycheck lives. The property tax is an assault on freedom of our property rights, and that is a right that comes from Almighty God. It's guaranteed by the Declaration of Independence and is secured by the Constitution. We, everybody here, when you were elected, you swore an oath to the Constitution, not to the school board, nor to the good causes that are all around the community, but to uphold and protect the rights therein. Yet last year, we had a 7% increase on our right to ownership. That right was levied with taxes. And it was also done in a highly inflationary environment, so that assessments were extremely high. And on top of that, we're talking about another tax. So it's just not pennies that you can steal people blind, a penny at a time over time. It's theft. But God is changing the system. The quantum financial system is about to be revealed, and it will put an end to government waste, fraud, and abuse through the weapon of taxation. There are taxpayers, and then there are voters, and they are not all the same. Mr. King, I would have to commend you that he's the only supervisor who has been consistently voting no on increased taxes. And I want to encourage all of you to be on the Lord's side, voting the Constitution, consistent with your oath of office. To do otherwise is to violate that oath. And to violate the Constitution, your oath to the Constitution, is treason. Thank you.
Thank you. And I got a note that Ms. Wyatt would prefer to speak on the budget. Of course, I'm, I don't know if you're in here, you can speak on both, the budget. Okay, thank you. Next on our list is Matthew Pickett, and then following Matthew is Barb Holcomb. Welcome.
Good afternoon, I'm here to speak in favor of the one penny raise. I'm a product of Montgomery County Public Schools. I think, what is it, 56 cents is the return or something, as the first gentleman said. I got a lot more than that, I got a lot more than that, I got all my entire life. I mean, I've, I've worked in a lot of cool places across the country. I've had people from Europe come here to do productions here because of the trade class. And I know we're not talking about funding trade classes. But if we don't fund the cracks and we don't have a good base to our schools, I do think we lose that. We will not have that. We can't do those things that give those trades, that give those opportunities to kids. I grill on my back porch with managers from Kroger. Where do they go to school? Gilbert Linkus, I think, or the, that of Margaret Beeks. Blacksburg Middle School, Blacksburg High School. Still do that to this day. I work with another gentleman, owns a small business here, employs a bunch of people. There's a lot of us. They may not be in this room, but we got a lot. And to, to limit the potential of some of us and where we can go because we aren't adequately funding these schools, specifically with the things that need to be done so we can build them better, to get back to a top 500 high school in all of our regions, in Reiner, where I live, and Eastmont, Christiansburg, I think that's important. So again, I encourage one penny. I'm happy to pay the 20 cents a day or less, whatever it ends up being. I know that it's depending upon your assessment, but it's not much. It is my duty to do that. I have said before, it would be like pulling the ladder up behind me as a recipient of that. Again, it is my duty to protect those or to advocate for those that do not have a vote. If you were under 18, they still want good things, they still want stuff. And they may not be able to vote, but they will. They may not be able to buy a house yet, but they will. They may not be able to work a job yet, but they will. We should give them every opportunity to stay here, be very, very good here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Barb Holcomb, and then Melissa Matuz. All right, next we have Barb Holcomb, and then Melissa Matusevich. Welcome.
Thank you. It's so great to be with you. I thank you for your service. I'm Barb Holcomb. I live in, on Upland Road in Blacksburg. I'm insignificant to you, but you and your service to Montgomery County is not, and others in our county too, benefit from what you're deciding tonight, particularly children and our educators. I work as a school counselor in Montgomery County Public Schools, but I'm not here because I want a pay increase. My main motivation, like all the other educators I work with in my school, is to help children learn and to support them, help them become knowledgeable citizens who can contribute in their communities. So your funding, if you approve the 1% per assessed property tax, will help. It's going to help with teacher retention, for sure. I know many teachers, as the first gentleman who spoke, who are working two jobs just to make ends meet in Montgomery County. It will help with food insecurity with children. I do cafeteria duty every morning, and I see children who come in, who grab the food. They're hungry, many of them. It will help with special needs children and that student population. My job as a school counselor is tough, but every day, I walk through the doors when I go home, and I'm grateful that I had a chance to help children today. I hope today, tonight, when you leave, you can walk through those doors and you can say the same. B.B. King said that the beautiful thing about learning is no one can take it away from you. And as the last gentleman who spoke said, I think that when we invest in children in our county, you often see that they become teachers in our county. Many of the educators in my school grew up here. They grew up in Reiner. They grew up in Christiansburg. They grew up in Blacksburg. My own son grew up through Montgomery County Public Schools, and he's a technician at the wastewater treatment plant in Fairlon. So you see that people want to remain here, and they give back to our community, and they're educated by us. So I hope you'll vote to support this this evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Melissa, and then following Melissa is Bonnie Harris. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. 55 years ago-
Sorry to interrupt you. Can you state your name and where in the county you reside?
Okay, Melissa Matusevich, Blacksburg, Virginia.
Thank you.
55 years ago, I began a 40-year career as a public educator. My first year of teaching, I was paid $6,000. The other day, I used the government inflation calculator and put in my $6,000 and punched 2025, and then I checked the salary skill for Montgomery County schools. A beginning teacher today, in real money, makes less than I made when I was making $6,000 a year. That is one reason why I heartily support the advertised tax rate, and I hope you will pass that tonight.
Thank you. Next up, we have Bonnie Harris, followed by Patrick Melander.
I'm Bonnie Harris, and I'm from Reiner, Virginia.
Welcome.
And I want to start off by saying I don't think it needs to go one way or the other way. We are all intelligent, decision-making people based on fact and what we need in this county. So I'd like to start with something. A board of supervisors is a group of elected officials. You are responsible for overseeing county government. You are tasked with ensuring the public services are provided efficiently and effectively while maintaining fiscal responsibility. And I have a lot of questions to ask you, and I want you to ponder on it. Was it fiscally responsible to purchase a very old, dilapidated building for nearly $1 million and set aside over $100,000 for renovations? Now, we're all pretty smart people here, and we know when you get into something and you start renovating something incredibly old, it's going to have surprises for you and a lot more money. I also noticed the 1-cent tax increase conveniently covers the purchase that you just made and renovations, but no extra money for our kids, no extra money for our teachers. You just voted to give yourself a 50% raise, and you don't want to give our teachers 3%? They are one of the lowest-tiered-paid careers, professionals, in southwest Virginia. I have two teachers, two children. I tried to sway them away from that profession. They have to drive to Roanoke City because they pay the most. Yet, they were raised in Montgomery County. All A Honorable students, all kinds of opportunity. I worked in Montgomery County. I partnered with local schools. I brought in kids. I know what we can do here. I implore you to look at that budget and find a way to take care of our children, start spending responsibly. And if you don't have enough citizens who are taxpayers who come in here to voice their concern, then you advertise, you get on Facebook, you get on the news stations. Let's do everything we can so that every tax-paying citizen who has been here for over 40 years and wants to stay here has the opportunity to voice a concern. And to remind you, you are an elected official. You are here to take care of 98,000-plus citizens and generations of those citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Patrick Melander, followed by Katie Seidman.
Patrick Melander. I live in Christiansburg. So our, one of the founding principles of this country was property rights. So I oppose the increase in the property rental tax rate. And I say rental tax rate because if we're taxed on our property, our tangible property, our homes, the land we live on, our cars, everything we have, do we really own it if we have to pay you a fee every single year, year after year? And if we stop paying, you steal it, and we get thrown in jail? So I absolutely oppose the 1% increase. I think it should be decreased, if not gotten rid of. And I wasn't at the meeting when you brought up this tax increase initially, but I watched the video. You started at 78 cents, brought it down to 77. You were all giggling and laughing about it. This is our lives. This is our money. And it seems like you're treating us, like serfs, like a joke. So I really did not appreciate kind of the antics up there. One way that I think, you know, an idea on how to raise, you know, if you keep the property taxes, which I'm, I mean, I'm not unrealistic, it's going to stay. But we've got so many ridiculous zoning laws where you're telling people what they can and can't do with their properties. Like, people have to have public hearings if they want to rent out their own home, their own property for people. And, you know, let builders build. Let people build houses on their land rather than having to jump through so many hoops. Then we'd probably see a housing surplus instead of this, you know, really crunched supply that's driving prices out of whack. So that's just all I wanted to say here, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Katie Seidman, followed by Michaela Allen. Welcome.
Good evening, Board Chair and members of the board. My name is Katie Seidman, and I live and work in District D in Christiansburg. I'm also the current president of the Montgomery County Education Association and the choir director at Auburn Middle and High Schools. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for the proposed tax increase. I would also like to advocate that the revenue from that tax increase be allocated toward the MCPS budget for the 25-26 school year. What would a tax increase allocated for MCPS look like? It would look like increased staffing for our understaffed and overworked special ed departments. It would look like coordinator positions to lighten the workload of already overburdened educators. It would look like living wage increases to keep up with the costs of inflation. None of these things are superfluous or malicious and should be supported by our community. The proposed increase and its allocation to the MCPS budget would allow for critical positions and resources needed for our schools and our students. The MCPS administration has worked diligently to present to you a budget that is practical, yet also forward-thinking. I fully support the proposed MCPS budget, and so I ask you again to support the proposed increase and to reconsider the amount of undesignated funds to be supplied to our schools and to our students. When I pay my taxes, I am not angry. I am not disappointed. I am proud. I am proud that my taxpayer dollars are going back into my community, to support my community. I am proud to give back to my community, and I am proud to take care of my fellow community members. Again, this is not about increasing taxes maliciously or unnecessarily. This is about taking care of each other. Every day, our MCPS educators strive to give our students the best we can with what we have to work with, but we can't do it alone. We need the support of our community and of our community leaders to invest in our schools and our students. My hope is that the Board of Supervisors becomes an active partner with us in that goal. Thank you for your time and your commitment and service to our community. I am grateful for the work that you do and for your consideration on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michaela Allen, followed by Andy Morikawa. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Michaela Allen, and I live in Christiansburg. Whenever we hear talk about rising tax rates, it is most of our instincts to automatically shut the idea down. Money's tight for everyone. For many, buying groceries and paying for gas to get to and from work is a true challenge. Life is expensive right now. I understand this just as much as the next person. However, I'm here in support of the advertised tax rate increase that will assist in keeping MCPS schools functional. I know that many, many people feel strongly that this increase won't make that much of a difference for our schools, but speaking as an educator, I see my special education coworkers who are drowning in caseloads that are double the size that they should be managing. How are they supposed to meet the needs of our students when they're stretched so thin that they hardly have time to see them all? This increase could help with that by giving the county the means to hire 10 additional special education teachers. The county would also be able to hire additional paraprofessionals who are an integral part of making classrooms successful and accessible for our students. We could gain school nurses, custodial staff, and two 504 coordinators whose job is currently being taken on by our school counselors. And while they've taken this in stride, coordinating 504 plans is not what they were hired for, and it's not the need that they should be filling. This increase would assist with the school security officer programs, which increase student safety, dual-language programs, the hiring of ELL teachers, all of these things that would only benefit our students, therefore benefiting our community. And for those of you who might say, I don't have children. My money shouldn't go towards schools if I've chosen not to have kids, let me ask this question. When's the last time you went to visit a doctor or a counselor? When did you last go to the bank or see a mechanic? When did you last have your hair cut by a professional, gone to a grocery store? Chances are, you've done one of these things recently. Therefore, you've obtained a good or service provided by someone who's been impacted by and shaped by public education. Wouldn't you like to think that your doctors, your nurses, counselors, emergency responders, stylists, mechanics, welders, contractors, all have had the best education that could be provided to them from the youngest age possible? I know I would. You may think this increase isn't benefiting you because you don't have children in the system, but the truth is, you are impacted by public education every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Andy Morikawa, and then the last person that signed up in advance was Joshua Bryan.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to-
Sorry to interrupt you. Can you state your name and where in the county you reside?
Certainly, sorry. Andy Morikawa. I live in Blacksburg. And I, I really appreciate public address. As a member of the audience, I'm here to support the 1-cent increase and for the support that, additional support that it will provide to MCPS. I'm a great fan of MCPS. My great-grandson will start in MCPS in three years. My grandchildren have all attended MCPS schools. My children have all attended. I can't say I did. I'm still a newcomer. Got here in '78, '79. And in public address, it's a great opportunity to learn, to hear. And I just want to offer my support for and endorse all of the speakers who are here to support the 1-cent increase and appreciate the opportunity to be able to both speak to you and to thank you for the leadership that you provide the county and to offer my support for the MCPS Board, folks who have a hard job, like yourselves, to do the hard work of providing basic services to we, the citizenry of Montgomery County, where the quality of life that you have contributed so substantially to is much appreciated by me, by my family, my friends and colleagues. Thank you for your leadership and look forward to your support for the 1-cent increase. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joshua Bryan. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm just here to oppose the tax increase as a middle-class, blue-collar worker-
Sorry to interrupt. Can you please state your name and where the county-
Joshua Bryan, Christiansburg, Virginia.
Thank you.
As a middle-class, blue-collar worker, like the lady mentioned earlier, contractors, welders, mechanics, hair cutters, we're being taxed into oblivion. We can't, you know, people are moving away and stuff like that. So yeah, I definitely oppose the increase. I think we can do a lot for the schools if we could cut some wasteful spending, like, like the people were talking about, the property purchases and all that, that were kind of, kind of wasteful, in my opinion. And before I go, I'd like to read a quote from Winston Churchill. "For a nation to try to tax itself into prosperity is like a man standing in a bucket trying to lift himself up by the handle." I think that applies here. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the end of the people that had signed up, but anybody in, in the room is welcome to come forward if anybody else would like the opportunity to speak. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kim Bowman, and I live at 535 Arrowhead Trail in Christiansburg. I do want to oppose the increase. I've heard several people speak about the lack of affordable housing in Montgomery County, and that certainly is the case. I've also heard a couple of people mention that people are having to work two jobs to make ends meet. And we are still in really perilous times financially. The current talk is that we're either in or headed towards recession. And in my household and in my business, that means I have to start looking at cuts, not increases. That's common sense. You know, the median house price in Montgomery County is $339,000 now. And with an average down payment, which is 15%, a PITI payment, which means a mortgage, including interest, principal, taxes, and insurance, is about $2,553.67 a month, or $30,644 a year just for housing in Montgomery County. Which, what that means is it requires an income of $109,500 to purchase the average home in Montgomery County. We have a problem. We don't need more taxes. We don't need more taxes. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carol Ahas from Reiner, Virginia, and I'm here to ask the Board of Supervisors to approve the one-cent increase in the property tax rate and to allocate that to the school budget. I hope that all of us would agree that we pay taxes to gain benefits as a society and that investing in our youth is one of the best investments that we can make. As far as I know, there is no constitutional mandate to allow real estate moguls to hoard wealth at the expense of our youth. And I know that some people have legitimate concerns, that, you know, we are in a time of financial difficulty for many people, and, but if you are one of those people who owns, you know, who has a $100,000 income, who owns that home, why you couldn't pay an additional 72 cents per week? That's, that, I think, is the real conundrum, right? A one-cent tax increase is really not asking that much. And, you know, I think, you know, we can think about, you know, people with high incomes who have high-value houses, you know, they should be able to afford more taxes. But when we think about farmers who typically have large land holdings and thus could suffer a higher tax burden from real estate tax increases, you know, what, what happens for them? We know that agricultural landowners hold a high proportion of property in the county and likely require much lower services from the county. So if I have a 100-acre farm versus a 100-acre housing development, I'm probably going to make a lot fewer fire and rescue calls. I'm not putting the same burden on the educational system. So a high tax burden is especially problematic for agricultural landowners. Fortunately, Montgomery County, years ago, has implemented a land use tax program so that land that's maintained in agricultural use or for forestry production is taxed at a reduced rate. So I looked at the land use value for a few farms in the county with a home on the property, and I found the following. An approximately 100-acre parcel with a home had a value of $632,900, but was taxed at a land use rate of $372,100. A one-cent tax increase would be $37.21 per year, or 72 cents per week. An approximately 240-acre parcel with a home had a value of over $850,000, but was taxed at a land use rate of $412,000. A one-cent tax increase would be $41.20, or 79 cents per week. An approximately 300-acre parcel, which is larger than the average farm in Montgomery County, with a home, had a value of $1.5 million, but was taxed at a land use rate of $540,000. A one-cent tax increase would be $54.07 per year, or $1.04 per week. So I think those people also could afford the one-cent increase. Lastly, what about seniors living on fixed incomes but in homes that may have appreciated in value over the years? So they now have this high real estate tax burden. Fortunately, Montgomery County also has a tax relief program for seniors with income of over $68,000 per year, so they can also apply for tax relief. I don't want to trivialize the expense to homeowners, but it's hard to see how that, that payment for the person with a $1.5 million farm of an extra $50 per year is going to really cause our citizens to struggle when we could do so much benefit and support so many students in our community, and especially at a time when we are in financial struggle. In our rural districts, those schools are such a huge resource and community center for all of us. So I ask you, please, to implement the one-cent increase.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Dean Hogan, and I live in Christiansburg. I want to start out by saying I have no problem with the teachers getting a raise, and we all need raises. But I'd also like to let you know that I'm speaking for the older people in the county that's living on fixed incomes. I'm a few days short of being 82 years old myself, and I still have to work to make a living. I have bills to pay, and after last year, the high tax rate that y'all gave us, it was forced on us. All you thought, got to do is just say, "Well, we're going to raise taxes." Well, the teachers do need a raise, and I don't, I don't deny that at all, but I need it, it needs to come from a different source of raising taxes. I can't afford to pay no more taxes. You say 1% is almost nothing, and to some people, it is almost nothing. But to me, 1% is a whole lot, especially after what we went through last, last year. And it's the same thing over and over again. If you, if you take this county and compare it with the other counties surrounding, I'm sure that this county is highly, highly, highly taxed, much higher than the other surrounding counties. This is Montgomery County, and I'd say we're probably up in the same tax bracket as Montgomery County, Maryland. So please, 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 don't raise taxes. All these buildings that's going up around here, brand-new buildings, new purchases, as a matter of fact, I think the county just purchased a bank right beside where I work right now. And you go downtown and you see this big courthouse, and, and the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department, they need a big building, and they, they need a nice building, but do they need that one that much? The last time I was in there, all I could do is just walk in the door and, and speak to someone through a glass. I don't know what's upstairs. I don't know what all it's used for. I don't know what all the new courthouse is used for. The new buildings that's going around beside the jail, I think it's just for magistrates or something. I don't know. But I think, I think money needs to be spent more wisely and save a little bit for the teachers to get their raise, but don't make me and my fellow people pay for it that's just barely get making ends meet. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Brad Soucy. I'm from Blacksburg. I have a 12-year-old in Blacksburg Middle School who is in the theater program, and I've watched the most amazing things happen in that program. Teachers who are not in that specific program come and sit in the front row, spend their evenings there, watching the kids collaborate. They work together. They, they put their heart and soul into these performances. The bravery that they have to do that kind of thing is, it's been really moving. We've been here for 10 years. I've seen, I've seen it happen in all kinds of ways, not just theater, but I think theater is a great example of what happens when world-class teachers are employed by a school system. And so I, I'm here to support the increase. I'm here to support its allocation toward world-class public school. It's, it's a public good, and it's an investment in our future. I'd love to see more moments like I've seen on stage where kids are bravely singing, and it's not just singing, they're, they're solving problems together, they're, they're rehearsing for the future, and they have a steep climb ahead of them. Their future is a steep climb, and I think we should do everything we can to help them prepare. So, thank you, everyone here. Gosh, thanks for doing the role that you're doing. I can't imagine what it's like. And also, thanks to all the brave people who came up to offer their opinion. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Penny Franklin, Montgomery County, Christiansburg. So I thought all I was going to say tonight was, please do the one-cent increase and give it to schools. But I'm going to have to say a little bit more now. So when folks talk about the population growth, and then there is a decline in public education enrollment, that still doesn't mean that the price of everything stops. Everything still goes up, which means that it takes more money to pay for it. It doesn't matter how many students that you have unless it dramatically drops by thousands. It still costs more for everything. Our students come to school hungry. You've heard this stuff tonight. You've heard it for the last several weeks. The school system may be the only place they get a meal, and as we've heard, people are working two and three jobs to make ends meet. So having the relief of not having to pay or worry about your child being hungry will be huge for our families. Our teachers, I don't know what happened in this country where teachers became just whatever, "We don't really need you." Every last person here has been educated by teachers to be able to function the way we do. Teachers are invaluable. They are the key to our future, and they're leaving, or they're just not, people are not signing up to be teachers anymore because there's more money someplace else, because they have families and they have children that they want to educate too. When we talk about the growth and the, the price for housing in this county, could it be because our developers are building big, huge homes so that people will have to pay a lot for them, and they will have to work two and three jobs to be able to live in Montgomery County? How about making sure that they do some affordable housing in Montgomery County so that people don't have to sell their souls to be able to have a decent home? We need to invest that one cent. That one cent needs to go into public education because it is more and more challenging every year to make sure our students are going to be able to meet the world that's in front of them. I loved what the young man said about pulling the ladder up behind me if we're not looking forward to making sure that our children are getting the best education, that hopefully they will stay here in Montgomery County. I drove around today and looked at some of the businesses that have come into Montgomery County and a lot of the new buildings that some who have been here for years are building, and it's because there's a market here. There are people who will do the work that they need to be done, but if students aren't educated, they're going to go someplace else. That's a fact. I mean, it's been stated over and over and over again by them and the folks at Virginia Tech, you know, public schools are key for them. So again, I'm asking you to do the one cent and give it to our students. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Angel Akers, Christiansburg. I grew up in Reiner in Christiansburg. 52 years I've been here. My grandma was here, my mom, my, all my family. And I oppose the tax increase, and I want to thank Utah for always not voting for a tax increase. And I know the same amount of people's been here last time, last time you guys jacked up the taxes, and it's the same people speaking. You know, until we get people to go vote to change it, it's not going to change, is how I feel. But thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Brennan, and I live in Reiner. First of all, I want to thank you all for your personal investment in our county and your respective home communities, not only in the substantial role of self-governance, but also in the substantial role each of you have played and continue to play in your home communities through your civic life, your family life, and your work lives. Truly, it takes all of us working together in our own ways to make our community work for all of us. Of course, we all know that life is imperfect, that the common good, that foundational, aspirational, and profound goal of creating a more perfect union with liberty and justice for all, has been and continues to be elusive for many who have lived before us and for many of us today. Being a seventh-generation southwest Montgomery Countyite, if that's such a word, being against taxation is practically in my DNA. In fact, it may be there because we are a long line of hard-working, hardscrabble folks who have mostly been self-reliant homemakers, farmers, laborers, and craftsmen, simply trying to get by. The first schoolhouse in the Reiner community was a one-log, one-room log cabin built in the late 1800s from the offerings of community members. Of course, times in society have changed, and history and people's stories matter. My parents were born in the 1920s, and the Great Depression was front and center in their early lives, a reality that both reinforced the need for and ethic of frugality, as well as a desire for something hopeful and promising, something more desirable. My mother was the first in her long line of altsizer relations to attend college, quite the progress, albeit slow progress, from a one-log room, one-room log cabin some 75 years earlier. In her day, few options were available to women for paid jobs or career paths. She became a public school teacher. While the story, her story is long, and there's no time for covering the richness of that story, she, educating and helping children and just about anybody who came across her path became the essence of who she was. While it is psychologically and viscerally challenging for me to advocate for raising taxes on my hard-working and low-income fixed-income neighbors, it is also hard for me to ignore the needs of all of our children. I've spent some time reviewing the school's proposed 25, 26 budget and can honestly say I see no excess. Indeed, all I see are the needs of supporting all of our children in the various ways they need to be supported in pursuit of that aspirational pursuit of the common good so that all of these childrens may have the best shot at life that they can have. I'm in favor of a one-cent increase in the tax rate, but only if it is to be used in our schools. Mom would be pulled in two directions, as I am, but she darn-well makes sure that that money was used wisely and that she would do her part to make it so. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good Thursday evening, it is. I'm Martha Ann Stallings, and I live in Blacksburg, Virginia, and thank you for holding this public evening hearing. It's very important for citizens. No matter what we think, it's important to be here. I had the privilege today to hear Mary Biggs speak to a Montgomery County-Blacksburg Kiwanis meeting, and every time I think I've heard it all, I always learn new things. It was a very comprehensive presentation that clearly stated that as board members, you are faced with making very hard decisions, and you take that to heart, and I know that. I ask you, as a citizen, to make hard decisions, and that one of those decisions is to increase the tax rate 1% and to use that to support our schools. Such an increase, if provided, to the schools would greatly assist with rights, and we've been hearing about rights tonight, rights of citizens that I know. Adding special educators and paraprofessionals to provide services for students with disabilities, and yes, this impacts their families, because these students have rights to be taught appropriately and with the right resources. Secondly, teachers and all educators have the rights to be paid competitively and appropriately so that they don't have to make that route to Roanoke or wherever it is. It's very important that educators be paid the right salaries. I'd want to thank you for considering this tax increase in support of the MCPS budget, and I want to add with a personal note, I heard one of our speakers was, is a parent of a Blacksburg- of a Blacksburg Middle student who's participating in drama. And I'm proud to say, I taught that drama teacher in third grade in the 80s. There you go.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Name's William Skipper, I'm from Blacksburg. I guess they won't let me talk about anything I want to talk about, so I'm going to have to, got four minutes, I guess. So I paid today $140 and change for my 2017 Nissan Versa. That was money that I could not afford. I could not afford the $140 that Montgomery County or the state of Virginia says that I had to pay, like somebody said, to drive my vehicle on these roads legally. I think that a tax increase would be unfair for blanket, to be really unfair for the people that cannot afford to pay. And they are people listening to us and there's people that are not listening to us that can not afford the tax increase. It's just the bottom line. Cannot afford the tax increase. And I would like for you, good people, to understand that and to not pass the tax increase. Whether you can afford it or not, I don't know nobody's income but mine. I have no idea if you can afford the tax increase, but I can. There's people, like I said, under the sound of my voice that can not afford the tax increase. It's financially impossible, mathematically impossible for them to afford the tax increase with the income that they have. I thank you for your time and y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you. Would any, yes, please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Anna Vijayan and I live in District A. Members of the Board of Supervisors, you have never cut school funding and I would like to thank you for that. My son is thriving in the excellent public schools we have here in Montgomery County. I'd like to start by just pointing out that the tax increase that we're talking about works out to $2 and change per month for someone who owns a median-valued home in Montgomery County. I'm here to urge you to approve this tax rate increase and to give the money to the schools. Without the tax increase, the schools will face a $2.75 million shortfall. Even with the tax increase, the students will still face a $1.5 million budget shortfall. Line items will be cut. The schools will not get everything they've asked for. This tax increase is not about approving bells and whistles. It's about approving funds to maintain school quality and address a few serious gaps. I listened to the last board meeting where you discussed this. It sounded like the majority of you agree with the need for funding, the following priorities for the schools. And I know it's a school board choice, but you all agree that a 3% raise is a good idea. That costs $4.04 million. School security officers is a good idea. That costs $280,000. Free breakfast and lunch so our kids don't go hungry. I think you all agree this is a good idea at $1.24 million. All of this adds up to $5.56 million. I'm missing the exact number, but I think your current budget gives the schools about 6. something million dollars more than last year. Why do we need a one-cent tax increase to raise another $1.25 million? Here's one thing. Special education. Remember that students with disabilities at MCPS are performing much worse on standardized tests than students with disabilities statewide. They need more help. Superintendent has come up with a good plan to better improve outcomes for these students. That plan is to hire an additional 10 special ed teachers and 7.5 paraprofessionals to work with these students with disabilities. This comes at a price tag of $1.06 million. We're up to $6.6 million now. This is maybe, I don't know, but maybe amount, about the amount you're, you're willing to fund it without the tax increase. If you fund the schools at anything less than that, you're looking at cost of one of the programs I just listed. The other huge need is to adjust teacher and staff salary scales. As you know, teacher retention is a huge issue for MCPS. Condensing salary scales, so it takes only 15 years instead of 30-plus years to reach the maximum salary for a position would increase our ability to attract and retain the best teachers and staff for our students. What would this cost? $975,000. We're up to $7.6 million now. And this is still basic, basic stuff. Here's one more. Dedicated 504 coordinators at $143,000 so that school counselors can actually do their jobs counseling students instead of 504 coordinating. We're up to 7.6 something, 7.7 something million dollars. No bells and whistles. Please approve this one-cent tax increase so we can provide the basic improvements to our schools. And just to finish, while I have time, the average tax rate for property among, in all of Virginia, 76 cents. So 76 cents is not excessive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward to speak on this public hearing regarding the tax rate? Okay, seeing nobody else come forward, we're going to close. Oh, yeah. Oh, no, you're only, you can only speak one time, but we do have another public hearing on the budget next. Okay, so seeing nobody else coming forward, we're going to close the first public hearing and we are going to move to our second public hearing for the evening. And that is on the advertised fiscal year 25, 26 budget. The total advertised budget amount is $270,810,181. We also had a sign-up sheet for the advertised budget outside, so I'm going to call the names that are on the sheet first. And then at the end of the sign-ups, we'll let anybody in the room come forward and speak as well. And our first speaker on the advertised budget this evening is Sherri Wyatt.
Welcome. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm Sherri Wyatt. I'm the Executive Director of the Montgomery Museum of Art and History in Christiansburg. And I just wanted to start by saying thank you for the continued support that the Board of Supervisors has offered to the Montgomery Museum. This is crucial to the museum's continued success and we really appreciate that so much. And as any good writer of thank you notes knows, it's best to tell you a little bit about what we did with your gift. And so I wanted to go through just a few of the things in the last fiscal year that your support has meant for the museum. One of the primary ones was your matching monies to, that made it possible for the museum to secure the Virginia 250 grant. This was a highly competitive state-level grant that we were able to acquire because of your support. This grant will support accessibility improvements at the museum, an elevator to reach all levels of our building, making it open to a far greater population for the county. Also, in the last fiscal year, the community service that the museum was able to provide because of your support included things such as our participation with county staff on the Montgomery County 250 celebration that will be coming in 2026. And we're honored to participate with you in that. Also supported was the archival care for the museum's collection of 20,000-plus objects, photographs, papers, that have to do with the county's history. And we are stewards of those for perpetuity. We, when we take an object, it's there with us forever. Museum programming that's been offered, we have workshops, classes and special events, two major events every year, a Heritage Music Concert and Heritage Day, which is a street festival celebrating our traditional crafts and other things. Also, in the programming that the museum offers with your support, our 10 rotating history and art exhibits each year, I think there's more than 10 actually. And among those, one of our favorites was just this past spring, and that's the Student Art Show that we host each year with Montgomery County Schools, their students. And that opportunity is one of our favorite times of the year to see the proud parents and grandparents and families come to view their students' artwork there in the museum. It's important to them and it's important to us. And your support helped make a, helped us make that happen for the school system. So we hope that you'll be able to support our budget ask this year. And thank you again for all of the support you've given us in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that was signed up to speak is Mr. Wayman Pack. Following Mr. Pack, I have Bonnie Harris.
Evening, Board. My name is Wayman Pack. I live on Piney Woods Road in Reiner. And these two things kind of go together in these public hearings tonight. And according to the Roanoke Times article dated September 18th, 2024, quote, "Since the 2019, 2020 school year, the county's public schools' overall enrollment dropped by 536 students," end quote. I won't pretend to know the financial circumstances of all the people at the last meeting or this meeting who are so in favor of a tax increase on the citizens of this county, but I do know about my household. My household can't work overtime to bring in extra income. My household does not get annual raises. My household uses our fixed income to purchase groceries that continue to get more expensive. My household has increasing healthcare costs. My household has increasing health, auto and homeowner's insurance premiums. My household does not want another tax increase on top of the one that we are on the receiving end of last year. My household has not benefited from inherited generational wealth. No one in my household retired from a six-figure job to give us a large retirement income. I've spoken to this board in the past about the difference between wants and needs. I want our schools to be not only fully funded, but also have the things they believe would make a better organization to serve our students. I also want cheaper groceries, better health, disposable income to spend on things that are beyond my current means, and world peace. My household has to do without things that we want, but do not necessarily need. If this board continues to raise our taxes, wants won't even be a dream. Needs will begin to go unfulfilled. With the cuts being made at the federal level of our government on top of the increased cost of living, how many more citizens are going to need services that may not be available to them? Services that they do not require this time, but because of constant local tax increases on top of the increased cost of living, increased cost of the basic necessities, they become unable to provide for their families. If welfare is no longer an option, how many people may turn to crime to provide for their families is anyone's guess. I'm not advocating violence, just looking down this path that you seem so determined to take us down. This board has a fiscal responsibility to the citizens to be fiduciaries, which means acting in our best interest with the taxes that are collected. This means investing our money with all of us in mind. You need to rein in your wants and concentrate on our needs. Better roads, expanded public transportation and other things that will attract people to this area. Awards given to the museum and other groups are fine, but the citizens of this county can't put them on their tables to feed their families. And while some argue that giving the schools all of what they want will attract more families to a county, I will argue that constantly increasing the tax burden of the citizens will have the opposite effect and dissuade families from moving here. Although the school system receives 2/3 of the county's annual budget, that does not make them more important than the other items that would benefit all of the citizens. It seems as though the more you give to the schools like a spoiled child, the more they ask for. Give the schools what they need, not what they want. If a teacher has to work two or three jobs now to afford her household, if you raise her taxes, we should have to get a third? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Bon, Bonnie Harris, followed by Patrick Malander. Welcome again.
Bonnie Harris, Reiner.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. You, you put it together beautifully and I really appreciate everything that you just said. I really do.
Living on fixed incomes, none of you know what that's like yet. What you think is, ooh, you get to Medicare and you don't have to worry. That's not true. You're paying $400 for a husband and wife for your premiums, actually more than that now. And then you have to have a secondary. And every year on your birthday, that secondary goes up by $40, $50. So you're paying $800 a month just in healthcare premiums because you're over 65. That doesn't include I, doesn't include dental, doesn't include your medicines, which most of Part D won't cover your medicines. So now you have to look for alternative means. Last year, we got a double whammy, right? You know, we had to have new appraisals. And then we got the taxes that related to those double appraisals. Your house is worth what somebody's willing to pay you for it. It does not matter what the appraisal was. Heck, you guys showed us it doesn't matter. The building you bought was valued at $440,000. You paid over $900,000. Who in their right mind would do that? Would you buy a house that was appraised at $500,000 less and you're going to write another $500,000 check to that person? No, you would not because it's your budget, it's your money. It's our money. It's our money and you are responsible to us. Now, another person sat up here and they made one mention of one of the items that is required for 65 years and older or disabled citizens in our county to get some tax relief. But there are actually four requirements. Are you aware of them? Let me remind you. You have to be 65 years of age or older on December 31st of the year immediately preceding the taxable year. You must own and live in the home for which relief is applied. You must have total household income that does not exceed $68,000, excluding the first $10,000 of income, for any relative living in the home with you. Total financial net worth excluding the value of the home and one acre of land must not exceed $200,000. And repeat applicants, it goes on and on, there's two other requirements. The point being, with inflation as they are, they're telling people now to plan to live to 90 years old. They're telling you to have at least $500,000 per person in some kind of retirement funds and plans. This needs to be changed. Most of your senior citizens simply cannot afford food, taxes, living expenses, medical responsibilities. They just can't. They have to choose. Please do the right thing. Go back to the drawing board, rework this budget so everybody can get what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Patrick Malander. And following Mr. Malander, we have Penny Franklin. Welcome.
Hi. Patrick Malander, Christiansburg. Full agreement with the previous two speakers. Those were great points made all around. I guess I'll just try and add a few things because, I mean, they, they covered a great bit. Just, yeah, looking at the budget, I mean, are we going to be doing, you know, double-digit percent increase, you know, $10 million every year? Is next year going to be 280-something million? Then we're going to do another tax increase? Just keeps going up and up and up? I mean, there's got to be some efficiency we can get out of the budget instead of just trying to throw money at it to fix our problems. I mean, you see our national debt, $35 trillion, because they just keep throwing money at problems and making them worse. And, you know, as far as, you know, pay and, you know, all the education in the county goes. goes, I mean, apparently I went to, like, the top public school system in the country up in northern Virginia when I was a youngster, but there, you know, there were lots of bad teachers, there were lots of great teachers, it was kind of a mixed bag. And, I mean, it was just kind of that uniform, one-size-fits-all sort of environment, and I'm sure, you know, I don't have children myself, but I'm sure it's pretty similar in Montgomery County and most of the counties around the country. And, I mean, when you have a monopoly on the education in the county, you know, you get to set the curriculum, you kind of follow what other people are doing, what the federal government's telling you what to do, really gets rid of a lot of the innovation, drives up costs, like, think of a business monopoly, you know, they can drive up the cost to whatever they want, force you to pay for it. So, I don't know, I'd say, you know, take a hard look at the budget. There's got to be, you know, at least $10 million you can find of waste in there that can be taken out. And think of, you know, more innovative ways to teach. There's all kinds of specializations, you know, maybe not every kid is great at math or English or writing, but there's got to be more specialized programs to kind of innovate and, you know, bring us ahead of the game and ahead of all the other systems. And just wanted to add as well, you know, if you look at the cost of schooling, private schooling may cost a lot out of pocket, but in reality, when you look at it, it's really more like half the price of public schooling when you aggregate everybody's taxes that you're combining together, and a lot of the times, the kids come out better in private schools because they can innovate, they can do specialized programs. So, you know, they can create great programs for half the price. I'm sure we could at least, you know, cut a few million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next, we have Penny Franklin, and she's saying she said what she wanted to say on the first public hearing. That was the end of our sign-up for the public hearing on the advertised budget, but of course, anybody in the room is welcome to come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. Again, this is Anna Vijayan. I live in District A. These comments, I haven't very carefully prepared, but I wanted to come up here and talk again. A lot of what the first few speakers said actually resonated with me. My heart does go out to those on a fixed income. I would like to know more about what options you as the Board of Supervisors have for tax relief for those for whom the tax increase is a burden. I agree with the commenter who brought up the issue that tax relief for seniors is limited to those who have less than $200,000 basically in net worth excluding the home. That number seems very, very low to me. I don't know if that's mandated by the state of Virginia or if that's something that you all could adjust, but I am wholly in support of adjusting that number upwards to allow more seniors to take advantage of tax relief. About the schools, the school budget is a very, very efficient budget. I'm sure you all know that, having looked through it and my points earlier in the other hearing kind of pointed to the fact that this is a budget that is looking at what the schools need. There were a few line items in there that would be amazing, which are wants rather than needs, but the vast majority of it is needs, and that's what I would point it out in my previous comment. The schools do a wonderful job. It's not a one-size-fits-all. I'm not sure if I understood the previous person's comment correctly, but I've found that teachers in the elementary school level work very, very hard to adjust the level of their, the level of challenge to each individual student as much as they can. There are students that are working above grade level, there are students that are working below grade level, and the teachers do the best job they can to try to address the needs of every single student. There's also band, there's theater. My son is in middle school now. There's band, there's theater, computer programming, and off the top of my head, I can't think, those are the kinds of things he's interested in, so those are kind of extra classes I know come to mind. But there's so many options for students to explore different areas, not just academic, and I think it's wonderful. Lastly, again, on the tax increase, I do believe your budget needs to be slightly bigger and that a $1. tax increase should go through. If the increase goes through, that will mean that over the past six years, tax increases have been just 1.4% per year on average, and that's taking into account the increased assessment values. 1.4% per year tax increase on average, that's not excessive, and this is, inflation has been 3.9% per year on average over the past six years. So 1.4% tax increase versus 3.9% inflation, I think that's pretty darn good. And you've done a great job keeping tax increases to just that amount. I know it's a burden for some people, and I encourage you to try to relieve that burden. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward?
Tim Bowman, 535 Arrowhead Trail, Christiansburg, Virginia. I just want to say that that figure was actually very deceptive. I'm not sure how it was figured, but I'm pretty good with math. And a home purchased in 1922 would have been taxed at $18,085.10. That same home today, if this increase goes in, would be taxed at $2,576.40 for an increase of $691.30 from 2022 to '25. That's in three years. In my math, that's a little bit more than 1.4% a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Bob Beer. I live here in Christiansburg. You know, I wasn't even, there's two different public addresses, but, you know, on your overall budget and so forth. First, there seem to be a good number of speakers who want to pay more in taxes, so I think we should have a vote, let the voters decide if they want to personally pay more. If that third of the voters want to pay more, they're charged in $0.3 and give that money to MCPS, or they can write a check directly to MCPS for three times the tax rate and that cover the money that they're looking for. So, you know, if those people want to step up and can afford it, then let them pay directly. And there's hodgepodge different things, but as far as teachers' pay, back when Dr. Meyer became on board, we were ninth in the region, now we're second in the region under Dr. Meyer and under Dr. Breggin on teacher pay. So that has increased, there has not been a, have been a pay raise now for 12 years in a row. So that is, there's no such thing as not, teachers not getting a pay raise, and they've moved from bottom of the region to the top of the region. All right, so some other costs I think we should be able to address. The one that we mentioned before was that building. I don't understand that million-plus building on Roanoke Street. That's something else. How about Christiansburg High School? You guys spent $95 million for that, and they never got to explain to me why, when Salem was only $32 million for the same type of renovations built at the same time, with the same architectures, the same nine yards. And all I hear was, you know, it just costs more, but no one ever explained to why. And I talked to some folks, and they said the reason that it costs more was because they had to use some structural integrity issues because they didn't want to have, what happened in Blacksburg happened in Christiansburg. Well, remember, that building was already 50 years old and never had any problems. What happened in Blacksburg, no one talks about, is that Blacksburg High School was built on sand, so you didn't have a solid foundation, and the ceiling collapsed twice, but no one talks about that. And so you guys just don't do your homework on understanding why something costs so much more. You don't ask the appropriate questions or address the public on why you want to spend three times more for CH High School than you had to. That's just, you know, very frustrating. We got fire rescue seems to be a new hot topic. You know, we spent $3 million on 100-some calls, and in Rider, we spent $104,000 on 100-some calls. It doesn't add up. So, you know, the question begins, who wants to be a volunteer when you go get paid, you know, $60,000 a year? And all it does is make bigger governments. So we've got all that money now going to fire and rescue when, you know, we were doing under volunteerism for $104,000 for the same work. Let's see here. And at the end, I think we should, as you guys are Board Supervisors, you guys should be thinking about ways to, how can we reward you guys for returning us to a republic and not quit doing this democracy stuff and keep spending, spending? That's tyranny. You keep spending and taxing us, that's tyranny. That's democracy. That's not being a part of a republic. Republic is, you know, we work together and we don't spend all this money shamelessly. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers that would like to come forward to speak to the proposed
Seeing nobody else come forward, I'm going to close that public hearing, and I just wanted to make mention of the future meeting dates of the Board of Supervisors. These were just public hearings tonight, so there is no action. Our next regular meeting is this coming Monday, April 14th, at 7:15 PM, again in this room. And during that meeting, we do have a work session on the budget. Our meeting on April 21st is a special meeting just for the vote on the tax rate and budget. That is again in this room. And Angie, is that one at 7:15 as well?
It's at 6:30.
So 6:30, thank you. On April 21st is when we'll have the vote on the tax rate and the budget. Thank you all very much for being here this evening, and this meeting is adjourned.